Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are here at January the 15th, 2019, 6:00 PM. We're gathered here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to first start out by introducing our honorary City Council member Kylie Price of Bacchus Elementary School, Granbury ISD. Tonight, we have Kylie here. She's with her parents. Kylie is a fifth grader at Bacchus Elementary where she leads by example both in and out of the classroom. She is a student council president. She's on the A honor roll. She participates in the Gifted and Talented Program. And she also participates in basketball, soccer, softball, and she made it to the Junior Olympics recently for cross-country. Now, in her free time, and I don't know where she finds it, but in her free time, she enjoys reading and playing with her dogs and horses. She is here tonight with her parents Jacob and Ashley Price, along with Bacchus Principal Kayla Bennett. So we want to thank all of you for being here tonight with us and celebrating Kylie up here with us. So we're going to get started now in the council meeting. Congratulations. We'd like to call upon Kim Erwin, the Executive Director of Brazos Pregnancy Clinic, to do our invocation, followed by our pledge allegiance and our Texas pledge led by Kylie Price of the Bacchus Elementary School. All rise, please.
Do you pray with me, please? Holy Lord God, King of the universe, you are the God of this country, the state, the city, and the city council, Lord God. Please come into this council, deliberate with us, Lord God, that our words and our actions are pleasing to you and bring glory to you. Thank you for this day in this council and this town. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Follow us in our pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our only God takes life, our only religion is to live, creates us, one state, indivisible.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We've got not a long agenda, but we've got a really important agenda where we appoint our board members, and that's always a fun thing to do because we've got a lot of applicants out there, and we're looking forward to assigning people to those boards that do so much for us. We're going to start out with the consent agenda here. Those items being, first item being consider approving city council meeting minutes of January 8th, 2019, regular meeting. Second being consider adopting Resolution Number 1903, allowing members of the city council to serve volunteers of any organization that protects the health, safety, and welfare of the city of Granbury. And number three, consider approving the interlocal agreement supporting the North Central Texas Council of Governments' application for the DR 2272 Hazard Migration Grant Program, project to develop the Hood County Hazard Migration Action Plan update, and agree to contribute to the city of Granbury's portion of the 25% local match. Number four is to consider approving the contract for administration service for the Texas Community Development Program Economic Development Texas Capital Fund for Project Blue Star. And the fifth one being consider approving contract for engineering services for the Texas Community Development Program Economic Development Texas Capital Fund for that project, Blue Star, also. Council, you've had an opportunity to look through the consent agenda items. Are there any items on there that you wish to pull off the consent agenda or to discuss at this time? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion from Councilperson Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. At this time, the consent agenda is approved. Kylie, would you be honored, please? Thank you very much. At this time of the program, we want to recognize Kylie for what she does for her school and to helping us out here at the council tonight. We'd like to present Kylie with a honorary council member certificate, and this reads on this day, the 15th day of January 2019, in recognition of academic excellence, leadership, and presenting the qualities of excellent council members, signed by Dr. Jeremy Glenn, Granbury ISD Superintendent, and myself, Nene Hewitt, the Mayor of Granbury. Get them all in there.
Oh, wait, hold on. Here, let's close the chair.
See how important you are.
Come on in. Come on in.
Okay. And we also want to present Kylie with this Granbury City pin. No, she can wear it whenever she goes places. Tell everybody that you're from Granbury, Texas, here. So we're going to give you this pin, this certificate here. And also, on the back of this certificate, there's a coupon on here that reads, "Congratulations on being chosen to serve as an honorary council member with the Granbury City Council. Keep this certificate for your records, and as you apply for colleges, scholarships, or in the future, be sure to list this as one of your achievements. Your service to Granbury ISD as a student leader on your campus is appreciated. We wish you the best of luck and a bright future." Signed by Dr. Jeremy Glenn and myself, Nene Hewitt, the Mayor of Granbury. So congratulations. Time for me to get Councilman Mobley to escort her back to her family? Thank you. The first item being a public hearing and consider amendments to the land use assumptions and the capital improvements plans and the water and sewer impact fees. Council, you've had an opportunity to look all these over. We've got a booklet also here that was printed out for all the council to do, and I think we've got some speakers also. So I'm going to turn this over to Chris Kaufman. He'll introduce our speakers and the other folks that we've got that's going to speak on this a little bit, if you would. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you're aware, we've been working on updating our land use assumptions and utilities, capital improvement plans. And along with that comes the need to assess impact fees or additional impact fees than what we've been currently collecting. We did hire a consulting team through Hibbs and Todd Improtech, and Chris Hay is here, and so is our consultant. I blank on her name, sorry. But anyway, welcome, and I'll turn the program over to these two folks, and we'll make a presentation, answer any questions you may have, open up for a public hearing. Angie Flores, thank you for being here. And then we will deliberate as necessary. Thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Chris Hay with EHT. We, along with Raff Telus, worked on the impact fee study and capital improvements plan. We have a presentation tonight for this public hearing. We've presented it twice before for the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, and we're doing it again tonight. I do have Angie Flores with Raff Telus here to make the presentation. So thank you for your time tonight, and we'll be here for any questions afterwards.
So, Mayor and Council, I am Angie Flores with Raff Telus. I worked with EHT to complete the impact fee study. As part of that study, we updated your land use assumptions, the capital improvement plan, and finally calculated the impact fee. We met with the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee twice to review the impact fee study and calculation and the report that I understand is part of your packet, this report. As part of the meetings with the committee, the committee made a recommendation to the council, which I'll go over as part of my presentation. So just really quickly, and some of you probably saw this at the presentation in December, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on these, but... So an impact fee is basically an upfront fee that is charged to new growth, new development. The calculation of the impact fee is addressed, and it's... There's a statute that provides guidelines as to how that should be calculated, and that's found in Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code. So we definitely met those requirements of that code in going through this process. So items that are payable by an impact fee are going to be your... Any of your existing facilities that have capacity that will be available in a 10-year period, as well as any capital improvements that are projected to be needed in that 10-year period. So those would include your construction costs, your surveying and engineering costs, any land acquisitions. Debt service is also an eligible cost for impact fees. So costs that aren't eligible, so any projects that are not in the CIP cannot be funded with impact fees. They have to be in the CIP. Any repairs that don't add additional capacity are also not eligible for the impact fee. The charge of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, as listed in the statute, is that they are to verify and provide comments on the land use assumptions, the CIP, and then finally how we calculate the impact fee. And so your advisory committee did just that, and they also provided a recommendation. So the first thing we did was define your land use assumptions, and this is really small on the screen, but basically what we did was just look at the acreage of the city limits and your ETJ, and defined how those acreages would be used. And so, again, the total acreage for the 10-year period does not change, just how it's used in the 10-year period is what changes. And you can stop me at any time if you have questions. The 10-year growth, we assumed 2.6% growth over the 10-year period. That basically resulted in about 1,700 new connections for water and about 1,300 new connections for wastewater. The next step was to identify the capital improvements needed for your system in the next 10-year period. This list, this table here, identifies the water projects in the 10-year period. Those totaled about $41 million. Wastewater totaled about $57 million. The next step is the calculation of the impact fee itself. One of the things that we do, and that is allowed in the statute, is to calculate the fee by component. So we break it down, for water, we break it down between treatment, pumping, your storage facilities, and your transmission. And sewer is broken down between your interceptors, your pumping, and your treatment. This allows for any negotiations that you may have with a developer, where a developer may want to put in the facilities on his own. Then you can give him a credit related to the impact fee for that particular facility. The next step in calculating the impact fee is to take a rate credit or a 50% adjustment to the fee that is calculated. Again, this is required by statute. And so a utility has the choice between taking the rate credit or the 50% adjustment. In your case, we did calculate a rate credit, and that was calculated to be about $2,200 per LUE rate credit. And that rate credit basically represents what your existing customers are paying through rates for your facilities. So finally, we compare the 50% adjustment to the rate credit, and we take the higher of the two. And so on this table, you can see that the resulting maximum impact fee is 4,900... I'm sorry, 4,000 for water. Wait. I can't see that.
4,460.
Yeah, 4,866, sorry about that. And 2,733 for wastewater. So one of the things that the committee discussed in detail, we had a lengthy discussion as to the maximum fee and whether or not, you know, what recommendation they wanted to provide to the council. One of the things that we recommend is that the council adopt the maximum allowable impact fee, but then maybe assess something less. And so the committee recommended that the city, rather than moving directly to the maximum allowable impact fee, that they consider having a stepped impact fee over the next three years. And so that is what they decided. And so these are... These represent the impact fees for year one for water and wastewater. And this shows the detail by meter size. So as, you know, if any development has larger meter sizes, they will pay a larger impact fee based on the living unit equivalent. So this represents the year-one impact fees. So that would be the $4,000 total. So that's a breakdown between 2,561 for water and 1439 for wastewater in year one. In year two, that would go up to 3842 for water, 2158 for wastewater, for a total of 6,000. And then finally, in year three, we would be at the maximum of 4,866 for water, 2,733 for wastewater, for a total of 7599. And again, those would be graduated up depending on the meter sizes. So that was the recommendation of the advisory committee. I will now answer any questions.
Angie, I've got one going back... I should have stopped you when you was on it. Going back to the wastewater, it's on page 10 here. I don't know where it's on yours, but you had the existing wastewater treatment plant expansion and the wastewater treatment plant in the year 2018. Is there a reason for that? Or is that... Why wouldn't that not fall in 2019? Because, I mean, we just talked about it in 2019, but we're probably going to be doing it starting in 2019 going forward or whatever. Does it make a difference, though? See, right here. The 32...
The reason why it was in 2018 is because we have started design on those two projects, and so the costs associated with those two projects are already incurred by the city starting this year.
Yeah.
It's not gone into construction yet, but part of this, these costs presented here in the capital improvement plan, incorporated design and construction. So since those costs started incurring, that's why we set that up.
But then the completion would probably fall in 2020 or somewhere around that.
Correct.
Right. So the debt service related to that plant was already considered as part of the cost.
In 2008?
Yes.
So it's being used as a...
Right.
To be recouped with the impact fee.
Okay.
I've got a couple, Mayor.
Okay, Council, you got any questions? We've got one from Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. If I didn't misunderstand you, you said it was like 1,700 in 10-year periods. Is that correct?
The growth?
Yes.
Yes, so that was in slide... Let's see. Let me go back here. Right here. It's, yes, 1,700 connections for water and about 1,300 for wastewater.
Okay, so that's about 170 a year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm talking with Chris, an attorney, before the meeting, just to confirm that they said anything platted right now that's recorded, we can't go up on them.
That's correct.
Any subdivision. So out of the 170 average that we've had in 10 years, how many of those do you think will be outside of one of those subdivisions? Because we don't have lots. There's no lots in Granbury. Two builders sitting right back there, I seen them come in, I think they're still here. They'll tell you the same thing. I mean, these are going into these subdivisions, which I'm glad they're here, but I don't see an increase. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Take Carl Greer's project on Loop 567. That will be 130 homes, right there.
That's already plotted, though, isn't it?
No.
Not that one.
Okay, is that the only one that's not plotted?
Ah, there's apartment complexes that are still on the make, too. There'll be... There's over 200 apartment complexes on the books that haven't been plotted yet.
They're still coming.
Each one of those, you know, you don't know until they show up, you know? But they're talking to you, you know? But each one of those apartments is an LEU.
Yeah. I mean, my concern was...
You think we're overstating the growth?
In new area. I was concerned about it in new area, Chris. I wasn't concerned about it, say, in Harbor Lakes or Highland Park or the other one. I think that they'll grow and grow, but we're not going to receive any benefit from that. And that was my concern. And you are right about the loop. But it just, you know, here's the thing about it, and I'm speaking, and I'll step down if y'all want me to, but I'm speaking as a builder. You've got a $2,000 increase for the next three years, correct?
The least.
The least.
Well, the middle one's 2,000, the last one's not.
So, I mean, we're going to hear from the other builders. I seen them sign up, but would we be better off to put that over a five-year period? I mean, what are we... How much money we feel like we're going to get out of this by doing it now?
I don't know the answer to that.
Does anybody here know the answer?
What the study did was project growth as best we can, and we used that based off the comprehensive plan, to be honest. That's what we based the growth off of. It was a previously established growth plan, approved by city, probably approved by city council.
A 2.5% per year increase, basically, is what you're talking about.
But that's 2.5%, Chris, but that's not new constructions in different areas. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but where are you going next? Go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to figure out. We're going to go up $2,000 or better per deal, but it's just going to be for the ones that are going to build outside of the ones that's already plotted.
That's all we can do.
Okay.
It's the best we can do. And we just borrowed $48 million for infrastructure that we're building to meet the growth that's coming, that we know about, plus what they're predicting.
And this is what it's going to take for that?
It's going to help.
And we also want to keep in mind, Council, that we haven't done this since 2003, and if we talk about going down there even further, then we'll be back in the same boat we're in right now, where it'd be overlapping and we'll be having to increase the impact fees again. Where at this point, as I look at it, we can get to a point where if, when we do increase those fees, they won't be the $2,000 or the $1,500 or whatever. It'll be incrementally smaller.
You know, you're correct, Mayor, but here's what concerns me is, the highest one is AMUD.
Yeah.
And they're a profit organization. And I'm telling you, we're... When we look at that $8,000 in three years, I'm not sure we're not ahead of them at that point. And that's what scares me.
Well, what is the AMUD fees? What are they? I don't see them in here.
Yeah, they're in there. They're on the second page. They're right here.
Well, they're in that report.
They're in this report here.
Here it is.
Yeah, they're in there.
And that's their current, and they readjust those every five years.
Yeah. Three quarters, 10,000.
Here's the comparisons.
Yeah, they're at 10,000 for water and wastewater impact for a 3/4-inch meter. Our maximum fee is 7,600. So we're going to be cheaper than them still.
I don't think we're paying $10,000 out there. I mean, I know what you... I read what you got, but I'd like to ask Walter and Brian, because they built in...
Well, for water and sewer, you'd be paying $10,000 and $50.
That's what they got them straight...
Effective when?
This is what they told us their existing impact fee was.
Right now?
Right now.
It's not. I'm building Bakon.
I think the difference is that you're looking at a full bore 3/4-inch meter.
Right.
Which I think their typical residential is a 5/8ths by 3/4. Where the city of Granbury, I think the new meters have bumped up our full bore 3/4-inch meter. So when you compare apples to apples, that's what it is.
5/8ths, 6700.
Yeah.
So there's 6,700 for a 5/8?
That's right.
Yeah. And I think that's pretty close to what we're paying.
Well, that's what he just said, is if you buy a 5/8s meter, it's less, but we...
Can we change theirs to 5/8s?
Our smallest meter is the 3/4-inch.
3/4-inch. But I don't think, we might not be ahead of them, Chris, in three years of 8,000. But I bet we are.
Keep in mind that the impact fees are going to help mitigate your future rate increases. So if you just issued $48 million worth of debt, that's going to have to be collected through your rates. So any impact fees that you do collect upfront will help mitigate future rate increases from your existing customers.
If you've got any? You can always come down, you know? If you adopt these fees and everybody says, you know, it just costs too much to develop there, lesson learned. You can always amend it.
And that's a good point. As long as you adopt that maximum impact fee, you're allowed to assess anything less than that, and you can change it at any point in time. The impact fee study does have to be looked at every five years according to the law. So also keep that in mind, that you can... You'll be reviewing this again in five years, and so if the growth for some reason doesn't come to fruition, or your growth is a lot greater, then you'll have the opportunity in five years to adjust the impact fee.
Is that a maximum, or can you look at it in two years?
You can definitely look at it in two years. And I have clients that regularly look at their impact fees every three, every two to three years because they have... Their growth is...
High growth.
Yeah.
This is the first time of this been changed, though.
I agree. I'm not saying they didn't look at it, but it's never been...
Yeah, they didn't need it, it was just first happening.
They didn't, okay.
Right, and you do have the... You can review the impact fee and make a determination that, hey, our growth patterns haven't changed, the 10-year CIP is still the same, and make the determination that a full-blown update is not required, but it is... The statute does say...
And you also want to look at what kind of debt you're faced with, you know?
Absolutely.
And this time, we're looking at some pretty good debt, so that's...
And when will this go into effect?
30 days after adopted, right?
Yep. I think that's where the...
So we're going to bill anything out without being in new area? We need to go get permits in the morning?
No, you got to platted in the morning.
I think Chris has got a question. Go ahead, Chris.
Angie, okay, I had too many rabbits to chase there. I was going to ask you something, and my brain, I went blank. Oh, the board, the Capital Improvement Advisory Commission that the council appointed, how many of y'all are here?
I got to go.
So thank y'all for serving, and thank you for working through the labor of this. I know it was a long, drawn-out process for us to get it to where you could meet and discuss it, but the vote for the recommendation, was it a close vote? How did that go? Does anybody know? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Okay, so the recommendation from our advisory council was unanimous for the... Okay, so the recommendation from our advisory council is unanimous for this three-year plan, so.
Boo on y'all two builders.
Council, we do, we do, we do have a, a public hearing here, so at the time of the public hearing, if some of those folks wish to speak, they can, but, you got any more questions for these folks right now?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
Got a couple of questions, so you stated if we do not adopt this and just keep the, the fees the same, basically, the debt service improvements are all absorbed by the existing customers, correct?
That's correct.
So, did you do any comparison to fifteen years ago at whatever the fees were, uh, how they compared to the, the local area, and did you compare the fees that were proposing, how they compare with anybody other than AMUD?
It's on the screen.
Yeah, if you look on the screen, we have the comparisons to other-
So, in, 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 I feel for the builders, because they're going to have to pass this cost along, basically, but, I mean, the way I look at this is, if we do nothing, we absorb this cost, not only the cost of the installation, but the, the debt, uh, and the improvement cost later, um, and I would ask builders, if the price of lumber goes up, do you wait fifteen years to go up in the price of a house, to the price of brick and roofing and those type of things, and I think as a city, we can't look at this and say, we're going to wait until we can no longer function before we do anything, because I don't think builders, if you're a builder for very long, you know you can't, you can't do business like that, am I right, Walter? So, so, so the, so the only thing I would ask is, is when we sit up here, we have to look at it differently, we're business people who are in, and are impacted by that, because effectively, the city in this arena is, is a business as far as that goes, so we have to address that. Now, I would like to apologize for previous councils for not addressing this earlier, because it's much easier to go up incrementally every five years than it is to hit you right between the eyes fifteen years later, but I'd also look at our grocery bills and our economy in general, and ask, what has stayed the same price for the last fifteen years? The answer is probably nothing, except gasoline has actually probably gone down, but, but nothing else that we buy stays the same, we all want better water quality and better service, but we, we want it for the same fee or less, and, and in reality, that doesn't happen. Where's the, where's the three-year period coming, I mean, what, what's the magic behind the three years? Is it just to soften the blow? Rather than just boom, we're changing, we're going to make it, we'll turn the water up, we'll turn the heat on the water up just a little bit?
There was some discussion about how that increase needed to happen, I think that was a compromise, that three-year stepped approach was a compromise by, by the committee, uh, between the committee.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, that's, uh, Mr. Campbell said, some, some wanted to make the jump immediately, and some wanted over five years, so three years was kind of the middle ground.
Yeah, I would, I would rather shorten that up myself, over a two-year period, because, yeah, it's, it's a big jump, but if we do it three years, then we're looking at it again two years after that, and we're going to do it again, I would rather go ahead and get this, get through this, see where we are with the cash flow and those type of things, and we can talk about it's going to impact development and those type of things, but this is a relatively small fee, when you look at a three-quarter, three-quarter inch meter, this is relatively small fee in the overall cost of a house in the city of Granbury going forward, so I would like to see us do it over a two-year period instead of a three, um, and that's basically what I'd like, that's my input here.
Mayor, I-
Council, I, I, hang on, Mr. Allen, uh, I will say, though, that, you know, you made the statement that they waited so long, that, now, they did look at it in oh-nine, and, and possibly, you know, there probably wasn't the construction, there wasn't the debt, there wasn't the, the need, I'm, I'm going to give it the benefit of the doubt, because, uh, you know, and probably left it the way it was, and that could be the reason why there was not a change for that many years, but, you know, you definitely want to look at the future, look at the growth, it's, and, and that's what we're looking at right now, as Mr. Allen pointed out, there's really nothing you can see right now, but I, I, I believe with all the annexation that we've done, all the, the properties out there, that, and people that are knocking on our doors wanting to do developments, that you're going to see a continuation of the, the development we have and the new developments and stuff, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilperson Reiner.
Since we're discussing this, uh, I, I appreciate the, the midway point, actually, I know, uh, Mr. Mobley and I are going to disagree on this, but, uh, three years, I know, three years.
Better thought, Mr. Mobley.
Three years is the same, but between now, immediate, and five years, I would suggest that we go with the three-year as recommended by the committee, and then rather than wait two years after that, since we have the opportunity to do this in another two years-
Two years.
Let's see how it's working, and then if we can make adjustments at that two-year period before the three-year period is up, then let's do it that way, so we're not just, you know, in right to the-
And before we, and before we make those, uh, recommendations or motions, I'm going to go ahead and hear from the public too, so anybody else in council want to, questions for these folks?
I, I'll say this-
Councilman Allen?
Uh, that, that was brought up in, in two thousand and nine, but it was before I got on the council, uh, I was at the meeting, and they actually tabled it, I believe, I could be wrong, and it never did get brought back up, now, that's not a council's fault, that's the city manager's fault, uh, and that's the engineer's fault, anybody but us, you know, but-
That's what it's supposed to work, it's only the manager's fault.
Yeah, but I, I do agree with, with Ms. Reiner, that I, I think the three years, I can't hear.
What is it?
Uh, I was getting some feedback, I couldn't tell what it was.
Oh, it's out there.
It's out there, okay, but anyway, uh, I think the three years is, is, is a good deal, and we look at it in two years and say, hey, we need to up it, down it, or low it, or, or do it another three years, you know, uh, go ahead and plan ahead.
Right.
We didn't do that, and, uh, I, I think it's the only way to go, I think you did it all in two years, you'd kill a lot of builders, there was a lot of people looking to come into town.
Mr. Mayor?
Council? Go ahead.
I would ju, I would just implore future councils, and this is us included, to not bypass this next time it comes around, we really need to, the five-year mark is there for a reason, and so if anybody's planning on running in the future, I would implore you to remember this day, and what we're dealing with right now, and the impact that this is going to have to raise these fees, and ensure that we do review this and make the proper recommendations at the time.
Okay, council, hold those thoughts, because I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and we do have a couple of, uh, folks that have signed up, uh, I don't know if they're just here to, uh, to help us out, or do they want to speak, but I've got a, a speaker card from Walter Harding, you want to speak, Walter? So, we're now opening up the public hearing.
Walter Harding, forty-seven thirty-three Rawhide Court, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate y'all serving, I know y'all have tough decisions to make, and not everybody's going to be happy, but you have to make them, so appreciate your time on that, uh, I had a big, long list, and I left it at my office, so I'm kind of ad-libbing here. Be a while, um, this is my home, I grew up here, uh, Lord willing, I'll die here, I have no desire to ever leave, um, I've seen things happen, uh, since I've been here, and sometimes the city, no offense to anybody, uh, can get not development-friendly, and I'm worried if we go up too fast, too quick, that we already have a little bit of a negative connotation with fees, and I think it's going to go a little higher, um, or get worse, I was on the capital improvements committee, and since I've voted, I've had a little more time to kind of think and digest through that, I think there was four total meetings in two years, and I missed one based on a previous appointment, but, um, there was never an alternative plan, uh, how else can we offset some of this, for example, can we do any new development in the future, have the developer pay a five-hundred-dollar fee to offset some of that, can we do a minimum water rate of fifty cents more or something, there's going to be some decisions that'll have to be made at a later date on getting that cost down, maybe, um, AMUD right now, if I go get a tap, water and sewer, by the ti, by the time you add all the fees in, we're at about seventy-four hundred dollars with AMUD, now, private water companies and private sewer companies, Aqua, for example, um, there's another one out kind of by the ridge, their water fee, a, a private company water fee is going to average five hundred to twelve hundred for a, a water meter, tap and set, the sewer, depending on where it is, is probably going to be about a thousand dollars, depending on the situation, and you have to buy a grinder pump in most places, which is going to be about another three thousand dollars, so I, I wouldn't try to compare it to AMUD, I would try to compare it to other cities, and we're high in year three when you look at the other cities, I think we're prohibitively high when we look at those other cities, um, if we grandfather any development in, I, any platted lots right now, I think that's going to have a big chunk of change that we're missing out on, so if these fees go up, there may not be any more development coming in on this type of a scale to offset those fees, because, hey, it's too high, we don't want to build and, and go from there, um, let me back up for a second, I don't own any lots currently in the city of Granbury, I have no vested interest on what I'm saying here, so this is just my opinion, um, but it's, if I go right now, and let's say I'm trying to build a, I'm making numbers up, two hundred thousand dollar home in the city of Granbury, right now, I think I'm in and out the door for about five to six thousand dollars, that's, that's a rough number, that's going to easily be ten thousand dollars when these fees take effect, that's, you're not just looking at the water and the sewer tap, you also have some building fees that, that are on there, that when you get your permit, it'll be out, that's going to, let's say, roughly ten thousand dollars on a two hundred thousand dollar home, rough number, um, it's going to hurt what most people would consider affordable housing in Granbury, uh, somebody building a two hundred thousand dollar house in the city limits of Granbury, they're going to lose money, um, or they're going to be a very, very, well, it'll be a rough product, uh, so as lumber goes up and things go up, you have to build a bigger home to help offset that, you're going to have a set price in the lot, for the most part, uh, materials go up, it's, you build five thousand square feet, your price per square foot is typically going to be cheaper than you're building three thousand square feet, you build fifteen hundred square feet, it's going to be a lot more price per square foot than, than anything else, so, um, I know I'm kind of rambling a little bit, I wish I had my exact notes.
You're doing good.
I would look for some alternatives before I would go jump that quick, so when we were talking, we didn't want to hit them in the mouth year one at seven thousand dollars, that's, that's a huge increase compared to what it is, it does need to be raised, it hasn't been looked at in a long time, I'm worried about the year three being too high and not competitive with, with what's out there compared to other cities, and people are either going to go to other cities to build, or the development's going to occur in the county, where it might be a little more cost-effective, so, um, in my opinion, if you're not growing, you're dying, you can look at Hamilton, Texas, no offense to anybody that lives in Hamilton or has any association with Hamilton, but that town really hadn't changed in thirty years, so if we don't have some growth, it's going to hurt, in my opinion, so think about that when you're voting for the amount, I just think the year three's a little high, um, if it was over a five-year period, it may not be as bad, uh, going to that, that seven thousand number, but all my opinion, I appreciate your time, if y'all have any questions, let me know, and, uh, I come from a real estate background, I've been in real estate a long time, and, uh, I'll, I'll be here for a long time.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, y'all.
I also have a speaker card for a, uh, Brian Blevins, Brian, you wish to speak?
Uh, Brian Blevins, I'll, I'll probably echo most of what Walter said, but, I mean, I was on the capital improvement board also, I was one of the, I think I said six years, you know, scale it up every two years, but we do need to do something, but I still had concern in year six that we were going to be high compared to other cities, and me as a builder, year six, I would probably start looking at other towns to build in or other, uh, places in the county, because, um, like Walter's saying, a lot of the affordable homes, as far as on the builder's side, there's not going to be enough money left in it if we're going to be ten or eleven thousand dollars in city fees to get out the door, so, that's basically all, um, all I had, most everything else he covered, so, thank you.
Does anybody else in the public wish to speak on this matter? J.C., you're getting ready to get up, aren't you? No, no, go ahead, we'll, we'll get you, we'll get you covered.
Bring your cane.
Carla's writing it right now for you.
My name is J.C. Campbell, and I do not live in the city, I live across the street from the city limits, but I can understand, I don't build houses, I don't buy lots, I don't do any of that, but when I was on the council years ago, and the, the growth was beginning to come along, it took us a while for the, for, before our financial advisors to told us, to ta, he told us that the people that's coming in are the ones that's causing the increase in the price, so the people that's coming in to, to live here, they want to, they want to live here, they wouldn't be coming, so they're the ones that should be paying for this, and, and the city has been remiss for fifteen years in doing this, and I agree with, with, uh, Ms. Reiner said, what she said, uh, but it's, it's the people that comes into this, to this town, that lives here, that use the, uses the facilities that we've got, the water and the sewer, and the, and the, everything, the amenities around the square, they're the ones that need to be paying for it, not the people who've been here for years, now, that's, that's a hard situation, how you go do that, and I understand what they're talking about, about maybe putting it out for five years, but I think that, that whatever you, the council does, I think the people are going to still come to build, there may not be as many, but I think they're still going to come to be, to build, and the city doesn't need to go bankrupt, because someone's coming in that wants to live in our town, so, you know, that's, that's all I've got to say, I think it's, I think the city is, is, uh, is a, a good place to live, and I don't think that, that, uh, they go up, uh, I don't see how people can afford what they, what they buy now, anyway, but they're doing it, and so I think that, that they're, they're going to continue to come to Granbury and to Hood County, so, thank you.
Thank you, J.C. Does anybody in the public, does anybody else in the public wish to speak on this issue, this matter? If none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, I will say, I've heard a lot on this, uh, the impact fees of other places, now, you, you need to keep in mind that, I, I'll give you an example, Weatherford or Cleburne here is at sixty-three fifty-eight right now, but who's to say that next year, or maybe even this year sometime, that they're going to be reviewing their impact fees and either raising them, or some of the cities might have been in the same situation we've been in and haven't raised their impact fees, you just don't know what the situ, the, the, the current situation might be when you do the comparisons, but I will say, with our present impact fee on the three-quarter at sixteen eighty-one, has been a bargain for a long time, I mean, when you look at the other impact fees out there, even small communities, this and that, that, uh, that's, to me, has been, you know, I mean, and we've had people say, well, our fees are a little high, I, and when I looked at this, I said, well, I, they, they can't be talking about our impact fees, because that's, to me, has been a bargain, I don't, not a builder or anything, but it looks like it's pretty, pretty low there, so you di, you just don't know what the others are going to do, and, and I'm sure that some of those other cities are going to be raising theirs or be looking at them, and some of them don't even have any impact fees, so I, I don't know the answer to that one. So, council, you've heard some, uh, pros and cons on this, so is anybody else, Chris, you got something you want to say?
Yeah, Walter brought up a good point about the little water districts out there, um, I would just like to make the point that these water districts, uh, such as, uh, Aqua or Monarch, do not provide infrastructure for fire protection, and that is a huge cost to development, and, and currently, our developers have to put that eight-inch water line in at their cost, but we have to supply the capacity for that, and that's what these impact fees are for, and to be able to get the water that they need to fill those pipes and to have adequate fire flow in the event of a fire, that's expensive, and that's part of living in a city, in a municipality, if, if they don't want that option, they are free to go out here and put in a septic tank, what does a septic tank cost installed?
Fifty-five, sixty-five hundred.
Somewhere around five, six, seven thousand dollars, and the water well, about the same?
No, more.
No, they're more than that.
Okay, so, twelve, fourteen thousand, if they want to live in the country and have the, the real country life, and not have-
I couldn't be proud being godly, always got water on me.
And does it have an eight-inch water line?
Yes, sir.
Well, there you go, I hope it's got enough water for you.
Yeah, it does.
So, but still, that's something to think about, is, is our, is our small water providers, even in our city, you know, we, in our ETJ, those guys don't provide fire protection for our, for our builders when they build and tie onto that little, uh, two-inch line that's running down the neighborhood, there are four-inch lines, and so we, we have different standards that we have to live with than what these little providers do, and that's a, that's a negative rub for me, because I wish that those folks had fire plugs in front of their houses so that we could fight the fire and prevent it happen, but they don't, or within three hundred feet or five hundred feet, um, another thing that we need to consider is, if we could back up to that slide, I don't have a projector, of the capital improvements that are going to be done over the next, uh-
Go ahead, go ahead and jump up there, Angie, because I'm going to have another question for you anyway.
Okay.
If you could go to that slide that shows the, uh, the capital improvements that are scheduled over the years, this is a forward-thinking document, and of course, you're planning ahead, you're not waiting for things to happen and documenting, and then assessing a fee. So, let's just look at that one, fifty-seven million dollars in the next ten years, and, and, uh, that's, that's for sewer, that's just- That's just for sewer. This is for water. $40 million in the next 10 years. Counsel, can you handle that? That's, that's almost $100 million. If we continue to grow like we've been growing, and we expect to continue to grow, we're going to be needing to invest that, that kind of money in our future, in the next 10 years. Well, really, 2025 is what it says. So, part of that, we're already doing.
If I could just interrupt you real quick, that, that doesn't include any of the investment that you've made recently?
Right, right.
In the water treatment plant.
Right. And do we have, yes, we have phase two of the water treatment plant here. And we've got the new, the bond issues that we just issued, that's 48 million out of that whole scenario. So, we've come a long way, but there's still a lot more to do in the next 10 years.
And we still have to pay for that.
And we have to pay for that. And, as, as looking at your community. And so, I, I have the same concerns that everybody's expressed here about going from zero to 60 in five seconds, or 3.2 seconds, or 10 seconds. But we've got to hit it with incrementalism, and what that is, is up to y'all to decide. But, you know, as the city manager, I would accept the recommendation from the folks that we appointed to that board, that worked hard, that, that were drug through the weeds on this and researched it, and ended up making a recommendation to you. If you want to go faster than that, that's your call too, but as your city manager, I'm sticking with the committee.
And, and there's no doubt that that fee, and that's my question, Angie, here, you made the statement that it's, it's better that we, we reached the max of the 75 at this point, because we can, at some point, within two years or three, or whatever, we, if we decide we want to lower that, what's the difference there? Is, you can't raise it, or you, or you, or?
Can't raise it without an understanding.
Well, you want, yeah, you want to adopt the maximum allowable. Just to say, this was the maximum allowable that was determined in the study. And so, that way, you can assess any amount under that as your, as what you actually collect. And so, right now, the recommendation from the committee was adopt the maximum allowable and then assess over a three-year period this amount.
Okay.
And then, you can adjust that up or downward, as long as you stay belong, as long as you stay up to that maximum allowable. So, you can't go any higher than the maximum allowable in the fight, until you update your impact fee study.
But we can go lower?
But you can go lower.
Assess a lower rate, okay.
You can assess something lower.
Okay, alright.
So, you're establishing the bar?
We could just stay at that one year.
As the maximum allowable. And then, you're also voting to establish the incremental climb to reach that goal.
So, basically, if we're going to that goal, and at the year two area, where we're at midpoint here, and we decide that looks like that's a comfortable place to be, we could actually assess it and do that, right?
You could take another action and do that.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
You could bring it down at that point.
We can leave it.
Or leave it where it is.
We can leave it where it's at, right.
If Mayor, on that.
Councilman.
On that Cleburne deal, it's $3,100. We just pull some permits over there, and it was $3,100.
I don't know why they would buy that here.
When you saw was the maximum?
On the three-quarter.
Here's what they adopted, that's what they're charging, this is their maximum.
Right. And that's why I'm comparing it with our maximum?
Yeah.
Counsel, any more discussion, any more questions for Angie, or anybody, or Chris?
I think the scariest part of this is looking at the future, how much we're going to have to spend to keep up with the growth. That's the scary part, folks.
Let's hope that we have that growth.
We bet, we'd spend money on schools and stuff, we'd spend money on that. Let's go up on our impact fees.
Okay, counsel, no, no further discussion? Well, if there's no further discussion, then I will entertain a motion to approve the said water and wastewater impact fees with the recommended gradual increase presented by the CICA.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Greg Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Reiner?
I would like to include the caveat that we readdress this in two years, instead of waiting the additional two after the three-year incremental increase.
Then we could do.
Review.
2021.
So, impose this now, review it again in two years before the three-year mark is up.
To see if you need to make that third step?
2021?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we need to adjust.
So, we're going to add to that motion to review in 2021. Formed by the attorney here, need to amend the land uses as they have recommended also, in that same motion.
And the cap.
And the cap improvement plan. That's killing me up here, he's killing me. Think I got them all. So, we have that motion, and we have a second. Any more discussion, counsel? If none, Councilperson Corgan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Allen, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilperson Wadley, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Councilperson Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, that is approved. Our next item on the deliberation agenda is to consider appointments to the following city boards, commissions, and committees. Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustments Appeals Board, Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, Cemetery Board, Ethics Commission, Granbury Parks Board, Granbury Regional Airport Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Municipal Utility Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Public Television Channel Advisory Board, and the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Like I stated at the beginning of the meeting, counsel, this is always the, the fun part of the year, when we have to appoint all these, the people on these boards. Years ago, we didn't have enough people to serve on these boards. So, we had multiple people serving on boards, which was good, they stepped up and served on many boards. We went out and recruited a lot of folks, and I would encourage people to continue to put applications in and submit them to our city secretary so that we have them on file, and that we're in a situation that we're in right now. And that's having, on a lot of these boards, we have multiple applications, and we have to make a decision of who we want to put on these boards. Bear in mind that a lot of these boards, they meet, it's a public hearing, it's a public meeting, a lot of times, if you've got, if you don't get on the board, or you've been removed off of a board, you still want to be active and want to get some input, they will, they will take your input, they will look at your input, they will, I'm sure, welcome you to, to help them also. So, it's not like you're not being on the board, you're just not a voter on the boards on some, on some cases. So, I encourage you to keep your names on those boards if you don't make the selection tonight, and because we, we really like having the opportunity to have those options out there. And we have several of them tonight that have multiple boards, we have some of them that just have enough of them. So, what I'm going to do, counsel, on these board selections, we're going to go through the, the boards, and I'll read each name, and Carla has put together a little spreadsheet for us on some of the, the data and the, and some of the stuff on some of the board people that have applied. And I'll read through that, and what we'll do, especially on the multiple boards, we'll go ahead and suggest, or suggest the applications, and then when we get the, the maximum there, then we'll vote on the, the ones that we have that fills that board. So, we're going to start out with the Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustment Boards Appeal. There's all five applicants are needed, and only meets, and they only meet if needed, the last meeting was in 2014. So, when I say that there are all five of them, we had five applicants, and there's five openings. So, I'll read through those names, counsel. Brian Blevins is a new applicant, currently serves as a capital improvement, which meets once or two times a year. Brian Gaffin, he's an incumbent, he's a builder, and he's, he represents the builder, he's a member since 2015. Terry Taylor, he's an incumbent, he is an electrician, he's serving as an electrician, he's been a member since 2003. Bob White is incumbent, he represents the building, and he's been a member since 2006. And Scott Yader is an insurance agent, he's a new applicant, has not served on any of the boards, and he has applied to fill this vacancy. So, as you see, counsel, we have five openings and five applicants. Is, is counsel, do you have any other applicants you wish to recommend?
Mayor, I have a question. Did you say they, they haven't met since 2014?
Uh, that's the information I get, only meet if needed, the last meeting was in 2014.
They're the ones that review the, the interpretation of the code for the building official.
We've changed the code several times since 2014.
Well, I'm telling you, their job is to interpret the interpretation of the building official.
So, do they, does the building official first have meetings with them, then tell them when it's going to change?
No sense to have a meeting, just have a meeting.
Why do we need them?
Again, if there's a, if there's a challenge to an interpretation of the building code, they are the body that reviews that.
They, they would hold them meeting.
Oh.
They're the check and balance, they're the check and balance to interpretation of the building code.
So, we need them, again, in eight years, we'll holler.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're just happy they're willing to serve. You can hear that?
You don't want to hear this? No, you don't want to hear it down the other end, what's wrong with you, fake?
He's not on, we turned him off.
Test, test, test.
Testing, one, two, three, four.
There.
I'm not going to talk anymore.
Yeah, you can.
Got money on that.
Don't bull up on us now. So, counsel, you, you've heard all those applicants, no, no additional applicants, so I will entertain a motion to appoint Brian Blevins, Brian Gaffin, Terry Taylor, Bob White, and Scott Yader to the Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustments Appeals Board. I have a motion by Tony Mobley. And a second?
Second.
By Bruce Wadley. So, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion on that? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Our next board is the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. Up to four applicants are needed, and they meet once or two times a year. Here again, we have Brian Blevins, he's an incumbent, he built, he's, represents the building, he's been a member since 2016, does not serve on any other boards, is a new applicant to the Building Standards. We have John Boyd, who is a city resident, he's a new applicant, has not served on any boards, but he has applied for seven boards, and did not indicate a preference on his membership is needed on the TV board, but his membership is needed on the TV board, which he has applied for. And we also have J.C. Campbell, he's an incumbent, and he represents the ETJ, and he's been a member since 2016. And we have Eddie Thunderberg, he's an incumbent, he's a real estate member since 2016. And we have Tim Martin, he's the chair incumbent for, and he represents the ETJ. So, like I say, counsel, we have four applicants here are needed, and we have five applicants here. So, I'll go down the list here, and I will write, mark down your, your suggestions. All who want Brian, and you get, you get four votes here, counsel. All who want Brian Blevins, raise a hand.
There's a statute requirement, we need two builders on this.
Okay.
We need, we need the statute requirement.
And that's what we're going to get here. Okay. What, and what, Chris, is, is let me know that, counsel, we do need two builders on this.
We're going to, we're going to look up the requirements and the statutes, there's, there's a, a particular standard of what that person does for a living to serve on this board. We're going to look it up.
What, what do you mean?
You got to have a realtor, you got to have.
That's what I, that's what I read out.
You got to have, well.
Well, they represent.
You're fixing to put somebody possibly on the board that doesn't meet the requirements of the, we didn't do our research for you.
Okay.
Who would that be?
I don't know yet.
Well, we have a building, we have a, John Boyd, just a city resident. He has no, nowhere. J.C. Campbell represents the ETJ.
This is in our statute.
Says 40% of real estate, Chris.
I'm getting there. Have you got the statute, Jeremy? 395 or something?
It says 40% of.
Bear with us out there.
Real estate, our builders, that's one builder. We're going to have to have another, we're going to have another, you know, only 40% to be builders or.
Well, who's?
I thought Walter was on there too.
Well, we only have, he, some, these are the ones that are coming off.
Okay, okay.
There it is.
Okay, go ahead.
Got three, got three.
Counsel?
I'm at 058, the advisory committee.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the advisory committee is composed of not less than five members who shall be appointed by majority vote of the governing body of the political subdivision. Not less than 40% of the membership of the advisory committee must be representatives of the real estate development or building industry who are not employees or officials of a political subdivision or governmental entity. If the political subdivision has a planning and zoning commission, the commission may act as the advisory committee. If the commission includes at least one representative of the real estate development or building industry who is not an employee or official of a political subdivision or governmental entity, if no such representative is a member of the planning and zoning commission, the commission may still act as the advisory. If at least one such representative is appointed by the political subdivision as an ad hoc voting member, 40% of the membership of the advisory committee must be representatives of real estate development or building industry.
40%?
Yeah.
Well, depending on who we vote on, but the first one, Brian Blevins, was, represents building, right?
If, if we kept who was on there already, we'd be in good shape.
Well, I think that's what raised the question, because we have some that just represented the ETJ, which has no building or nothing, and I'm assuming they were okay on there before, but glad the city manager brought this to our attention. And then you had another one that represented the ETJ.
Well, what does Tim Martin do?
Who?
Tim.
Surveyor.
Surveyor, yeah. He does, you'd consider him in the, a building, wouldn't you, or commercial or residential? But he don't say anything in there, but you can have anybody from the city, if EJT.
Yeah, that's part of real estate development or the building industry.
Yeah. So, instead of ETJ, he should have been building.
Meredith, this.
I think we'll catch.
Because he doesn't say anything about the city, does he, in there?
No, no.
In fact, you're supposed to have somebody from the ETJ.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so.
I don't know where that formula is, but I'm not reading it here.
Okay.
So, in case John Boyd couldn't be on there, right?
Right.
But he's on the city, right?
That's right. So, here we go.
Why don't we just keep what we got?
We've done Brian, Brian Blevins, and we got five.
Harden doesn't want to serve again.
And John Boyd, but he's not on, but he's not up yet. He's not up, he's not up yet. The next one was John Boyd, which is a new applicant, has not served on a board, he applied for seven board, he did not indicate a preference, his membership is needed on the TV advisory board, which is opening, and as we've indicated, I don't think he falls in that category. When it adds your vote to Mr. Blevins, so we got six now, Blevins. So do we have any votes for John Boyd? Our next one is J.C. Campbell, which is, represents the ETJ, been a member since 2016. How many vote for J.C. Campbell? There's six.
Mayor. Mayor.
It's.
If there's no votes for John Boyd, does.
That's right.
Do we still need to vote for?
No, we don't. We don't. Trying to tell me to speed this thing up, is that what you're trying to say?
No, I would never do that.
So with no votes for John Boyd, then we have the, the remainder left to fill those, to fill those applications. We have Brian Blevins, J.C. Campbell, Eddie Thunderberg, and Tim Martin. So with that said, I will entertain a motion to appoint those, those folks on that board. I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner and by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on that board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are appointed to the board. They get easier, trust me. Our next one is the cemetery board, all three applicants are needed, so, they meet monthly, but there is no new business for the month, they do not meet, so typically two or four times a year. Those applicants are John Boozer, which is a incumbent member since 2009, Jake Caraway, he's incumbent member since 2014, and David Southern, which is the chair, incumbent member since 2011. Counsel, if there are no other nominations, I would entertain a motion to appoint John Boozer, Jake Caraway, and David Southern to the cemetery board.
So moved.
I have a motion by Tony Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Greg Corgan. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Our next board is our Ethics Commission, which is an all-new commission. All six applicants are needed, the newly formed, it's a newly formed commission. There are no current members, we will need, we'll only meet if needed. Those people that have signed up to, to serve on the Ethics Commission are Steve Fortner, does not serve on any boards, Larry Gilli, does not serve on any other boards, and he was the chair of the charter review in 2018, Richard Hofs, he does not serve on any other boards, Vicki Lee does not serve on any of the boards, Jim Marshall does not serve on any other boards, but was on the, was on the charter, and Gary Miller. So council, are there any other suggestions on that board, nominations? If none, I will entertain a motion to appoint Steve Fortner, Larry Gilli, Richard Hofs, Vicki Lee, Jim Marshall, and Gary Miller to the Ethics Commission.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Bruce Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on that board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those folks will be assigned to that board. Our next one is our Granbury Parks Board, six applicants are needed. They generally meet monthly, occasionally they skip a month due to no business. One of the applicants has stated she did not apply and wants her be removed off of that board. Cindy Peters, right? Is that you, Cindy? Okay.
Your name's on there, bro.
Pause and show.
It's too late.
Too late, you're on it.
So moved.
So council, our first one is Barbara Boozer, she's incumbent member since 2008, does not serve on any other boards. Who, who, how many vote for Barbara Boozer? Raise your hands. All. The next one is Brian Blevins, he's a new applicant to the parks, currently serves on the Capital Improvements, which meets one to two times a year, and is a new applicant to the building standards, which hasn't met since 2014. Show of hands for Brian Blevins.
Only reason I'd vote for Brian, I mean, he's a good friend, but he's a local, went to school here in. He has talked to me about the parks, recreation, different things. I think he'd make a good member, I really do. That's just my one vote. Only vote.
Our next one is John Boyd, who is a new applicant, has not served on any boards, he's applied for seven boards, and as we've indicated, he is needed on the TV advisory board. John Boyd, show of hands. Is that a maybe?
I got ahead, no, I got ahead of myself.
Got ahead of me. The next one is Jean Kate, she's a chair incumbent since nineteen ninety-nine, and does not serve on any other boards. Show of hands for Jean Kate. Our next one is James Dickens, he's incumbent, he'd been there a member since 2017, he does not serve on any other boards, and he also serves as a part-time employee at the city Granbury, for the visit Granbury. Show of hands for James Dickens. The next one is Larry French, he is a new applicant, has not served on any boards, applied for this board and the airport board, also applied for the P and Z and the ZBA, but he is not qualified as he is not a city resident, so we will scratch him. But hang on, we've got other boards for him. The next one is Bev Groves, she's incumbent, member since 2009, does not serve on any other boards. Show of hands for Bev Groves. The next one is Kylie Cuban, she's incumbent member since 2017, and does not serve on any other boards. Show of hands for Kylie Cuban. Our next one is Joan Snyder, she's incumbent member since 2011, does not serve on any other boards. Show of hands for Joan Snyder. So we have our six, we have our one, two, three, four, five.
Mayor, how about this lady, Cindy Peters?
Six boomers, we voted her out.
We got one vote.
So council, we have, we have nominations of Barbara Boozer, Jean Kate, James Dickens, Bev Groves, Kylie Cuban, Kylie, Kylie.
Order in the court.
Order in the court, yeah, Kylie Cuban, and Joan Snyder. I entertain, I entertain a motion to select those folks on the Parks Board. I hear a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion on those selections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Our next one, gets kind of complicated here, bear with me, council. The regional, the Granbury Regional Airport Board, there are six applications that are needed to meet, they meet quarterly. Also, a side note on this one here, the airport board has one alternate who is currently Lon Wimberly, which you won't see on there. At the council, at our discretion, we can appoint that person as a regular member tonight, and then we can move on with five applicants and one alternate. So council, at this time, I will entertain a motion to appoint Lon Wimberly as a norm, as a, a regular board member.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Corgan. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Lon Wimberly will be a regular member, so that leaves us with five applications available and one alternate. What I will do right now is go through the board applicants for the five applicants. Here again, we have John Boyd, a new application and not served on a board, applied for seven. Show of hands for John. May get to it quick here. The next one is Larry French. He's a new applicant, has not served on a board, applied for this board and the parks, also applied for P and Z, ZBA, is not qualified as he is not a city resident on those. Show of hands for Larry. The next one is Rick Huber, incumbent, member since 2012, does not serve on any other boards. Show of hand for Rick Huber. Next one is James Blaney, he's a new applicant, has not served on the board. Show of hands for James. Next one is John Roberts, he's a new applicant, has not served on a board. Show of hands for John. Next one is Steve Roth, he's incumbent member since 2017, does not serve on any other boards. Show of hands for John, Steve.
We can go ahead and go on the next two, and they give you your number.
Yep. So the next two, I'm assuming that everybody's okay with Jackie Vaughn and Mark Zimmerman. So that gives us five applicants here that have six votes, Rick Huber, John Roberts, Steve Roth, Jackie Vaughn, and Mark Zimmerman. All in favor of those five serving on the.
Need, need a motion, Mayor.
Airport board, all in favor. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
To select those folks to the airport board. I have a motion by Councilman Allen, and a second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those five are appointed. Now we have appointment for an alternate. Well, it has to be one of them that we didn't get, that didn't get selected. We have John Boyd, Larry French, and James Blaney. Anybody have a nomination for the alternate?
Mister Mayor, I'd like to nominate Larry French as the alternate.
Larry French? Doesn't need.
So we don't do an alternate here?
Yeah, we're doing an alternate.
We're good.
Catching the city manager up, he got lost there.
I got wandering off.
He wandered off, he wandered off on me. Okay. I have a, I have a nomination for Larry French, do you have any other nomination? So I'll entertain a motion to select Larry French as our alternate for the, the airport board.
So moved.
I have that motion by, second by this Reiner. And a motion. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, Larry French as the alternate, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Larry French will be the, the alternate. Next, we'll move to the Historic Preservation Commission. Three applicants are needed, they meet twice a month. I will now move down to the list of applicants, the first one being John Boyd, city resident, new applicant, has not served on any boards, applied for seven boards, is holding out for the TV board here. Show of hands for John Boyd. Next one is Kate Coleran, she's incumbent, historic district, she represents the historic district, member since 2018, does not serve on any other boards. She does have a low attendance rate though, I will point that out, council. Show of hands for Kate Coleran. What am I showing, four? Our next one is Brian Gaffin, he's owner and landmark in twenty, he currently serves on the building standards, which me, has met since 2014, his term is up on the building standards, but applied for reappointment, and he did get appointed. Show of hands for Brian Gaffin. Next one is Tracy Harper, she's incumbent in the historic district, been a member since 2018. Show of hands for Tracy Harper. Next one, here she is, Cindy Peters, incumbent, historic district, owner, been a member since 2017, and does not serve on any other board, but is, but she has not applied for the parks board. Okay, we'll take that off. Show of hands for Cindy Peters. Oh, we got, hold, hands up again, one, two. The next one is Carrie Young, she's a city resident, she previously served on the historic preservation as a chair. She completed a term, and she had some issues where she had to step down, but she's ready to serve again. Show of hands for Carrie Young. Okay, council, we need we need three applicants here. And the top three will be Tracy Harper, Cindy Peters, and Kate Coleran. So I entertain a, entertain a motion to select Kate Coleran, Tracy Harper, and Cindy Peters to our historic preservation.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Corgan. Yeah, I know you all sound alike here. Any more discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our new appointees are Kate Coleran, Tracy Harper, and Cindy Peters. Next, we'll move down to Municipal Utility Advisory Board. Two applicants are needed, they meet three to four times a year. The first one being Tom Baker, he's an incumbent, been a member since 2017, currently serves on this board and the ZBA, which meets monthly. Show of hands for Tom Baker. The next one, John Boyd, new applicant, has not served the board, applied for seven boards, did not indicate preference. He is needed as a membership on the TV advisory board. Show of hands for John Boyd. Next one is Gary Goldston, chair, he's the chair of this one, incumbent, member since 2008, does not serve on any of the board. Show of hands for Gary. So council, you have Tom Baker and Gary Goldston, I'll entertain a motion to select Tom Baker and Gary Goldston to the Municipal Utility Advisory Board.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and Councilman Corgan. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved for those, Tom Baker and Gary Goldston on the Municipal Utility Advisory Board. Our next one is our Planning and Zoning Commission. There's four applications needed, they meet monthly. We have five applicants here. First one being Tim Hallman, he's incumbent, been a member since 2013, does not serve on any other board. Got a good attendance rate. Show of hands for Tim Hallman. The next one is Tony Hedges, incumbent member since 2015, does not serve on any other board, has a good attendance record. Show of hands for Tony Hedges. Next one being Rita Kay, she is the chair, incumbent member since 2000, does not serve on any other boards, good attendance record. Show of hands for Rita Kay. Next one being David Southern, incumbent member since 2017, currently serves on this board, and he's also the chair of the cemetery board. Terms are up on both, he applied for appointment to both of them, and his attendance is good. Show of hands for David Southern. Next one being Steve Vale, he is a new applicant, has not served on a board. Currently, he is a part-time employee at the city airport. Show of hands for Steve Vale. So council, on our Planning and Zoning Commission, we have four applicants, we have Tim Hallman, Tony Hedges, Rita Kay, and Stephen Vale. I will entertain a motion to select Tim Hartman, Tony Hedges, Rita Kay, and Steve Vale to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
I have a motion by Tony, Councilman Mobley and Councilman Wadley.
Can we discuss that just a second, Mayor?
It's in the discussion right now.
Alrighty. Steve Vale's a great guy. He's my neighbor, live right down the street from me. Steve was president of our association for about four years, and did one half the job. I think he got, he caught more slack than a lot of us council people have. And I know when he came up to run for school board, I mean, airport board, a couple of years ago, Mister Mobley and I both was backing him and wanting to have the job, and Chris told us it was a conflict of interest with him working there, and we backed off, and I think it was probably a smart deal we did that. But here we go, and the next year or two, we're going to be doing more at the airport. There were a lot of other areas in our city. And when he's sitting on P and Z and there's changes coming up, he's got to excuse himself from voting on it, because he's an employee of the, of the airport. I think it. Beg pardon?
Who is it?
Anyway, I, I just think that he could serve on so many other boards. And I'd be happy to nominate him on about any other board size this one. But you know, his wife wrote, wrote a letter to one of her neighbors, it was Romans thirteen thirty. Love, no harm to a neighbor. Therefore, love is the, is the fulfillment of the law. And I believe that's exactly what we got here, is fulfilling the law of our taxpayers. We're elected up here to represent all y'all. And when we put people on there knowing it's a conflict, that's not fair to our taxpayers. We need people to be able to vote on stuff. And I'd ask that y'all would reconsider Mister Vale and put him on a different board.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Allen, go ahead, and Mr. Mobley.
So since we brought this up, and effectively, we shouldn't have any developers, builders, or anybody else that does business that's in, in this city on any board, including the council, because they may have to recuse themselves from a vote. The reason Mr. Vale was not allowed to apply for and get on the airport board is because he was an employee at the airport. Therefore, you cannot be on the board that directly influences your position at the city. Therefore, I stand by the, uh, the motion for the four that we, uh, that have been, have been voted on, and we move forward with this vote. So I'll call the question.
We need a vote on the call of question. Call the question, you have a second.
Second.
You got a second? Call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Should we move on with the ones we have, have right now? Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
We have one nay on that one. Those four will be selected to the planning and zoning. Tim Hallman, Tony Hedges, Rita Kay, and Steve Vale. Next one is our public television channel advisory board. Four applicants are needed, three to fill the expired terms, and one to fill an unexpired term ending in 2020. We'll end with a good one here. We have four, four positions, and we have four applicants. Those applicants are John Boyd, Maureen Griffin, Canut, Hippenetti? I think I got it right. Kevin Myers.
So moved.
Counsel, if there's no other, no other appointees, I will entertain a motion to nominate those said, said people.
So moved.
I have-
Second.
Do we need to appoint, define that?
Please let John Boyd have a full term.
(laughing) I'll second that motion.
So can we, can we go ahead and nominate these and then do that, and then, and then appoint somebody to fill that? I think we can, can't we? Can we do that? Okay, let's go ahead and nominate the four that we have here already, and then we'll make a motion on which one fills the unexpired term. So right now, we have John Boyd, Maureen Griffin, Canut, Hippenetti, and Kevin Myers, and we have a motion-
And a second.
-and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those four are approved. Now we will entertain a motion. We will select one of these four people to fulfill the unexpired term, and that is for how long?
Next year.
For one year.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to nominate Kevin Myers for that spot, just simply because he's been on that board longest.
I second that motion, mayor.
So we have a motion for Kevin Myers and a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on that?
Can we extend John Boyd's term?
(laughing)
Twice?
He may, he may get it, he may get it.
I don't even know that man, and I feel for him.
So we have that motion for Kevin Myers to fulfill the unexpired term, and we have a second on that. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Kevin Myers will fill the unexpired term. Our next one and last one is the zoning board of adjustment. Three applicants are needed, and we have three applicants out there. Our applicants are Tom Baker, Eileen Kate, who is the chair, and Ernestine Shugart. So I'll entertain a motion to, uh, select Tom Baker, Eileen Kate, and Ernestine Shugart as the zoning board of adjustment applicants.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are, those are approved. Tom Baker, Eileen Kate, Ernestine Shugart for the zoning board of adjustments. Well, that wasn't so painful, was it? Once again, I do thank everybody that applied for those boards, and, and if you know of folks out there that want to keep, continue to apply for them, go to the city secretary's office, put your applications in. We always like to have additional applications in there so that when we get to this point, we have those problems of having too many, and that's not a bad problem to have. So thank you very much for applying. I now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session that all our members are present, and the city council will go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas government code, and in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections, section 551071, consultation with our attorney, section 551072, deliberation regarding our real property, and section 55107, deliberation regarding economic development. We will now go into executive session. It is now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. Counsel, do you have any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.